Compared to the previous permission, additional opening days and longer opening hours are proposed. As the existing operation does not result in any impact on immunity which are unacceptable or contrary to the policies which seek to protect immunity, and given that environmental protection have no objection to the proposed hours, these times are considered to be acceptable. The additional condition which is listed in your updates report is considered necessary to ensure compliance with those opening times. The structures which are proposed to be retained in either their current form or subject to some alteration and replacement are temporary in nature and designed to create the junkyard aesthetic within the site. They would not be appropriate to retain permanently, but on a temporary basis and in the context of this particular venue, the low level of harm to heritage access is outweighed by the economic benefits of operating a meanwhile use of the land pending redevelopment. Allowing some flexibility in the permission for a number of the structures to be altered or replaced is considered to be acceptable, providing they do not exceed the maximum dimensions of the existing, and this can be managed by condition. Conditions relating to a litter management plan, travel information plan, cycle storage, and a flood response plan are also necessary. The application is recommended for approval subject to these conditions, and also the additional condition in the updates report on opening hours.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. We've got a little speakers up this, and we'll move on to questions to the planning officer, the council sirs.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions, if I may. First of all, the extension of the opening hours to 22:30, is this necessary? As I would imagine, it would take a good half hour for people to disperse, and then people working there have got to pack up, which then takes the time around 2:11 o'clock. And is this acceptable, particularly on a Sunday night, when people are getting ready for work on Monday morning? Also, I'm certain the answer will be positive on this, are the marquee structures anchored in the event of strong winds? And my third question, is there anything regulating the sound levels of the background music, which would be particularly intrusive on a very still evening?
In terms of the first question about opening hours, the proposal is that it would be that customers could be on the site until the either 22:30 or 23:00 on the different days. As you note, it would take time for staff to pack up and clear, as it does under the existing operations where customers leave at 22:00 hours, so there is a further extension to that, which... So the proposal is extending the time that the customers would be on site, and I appreciate that, yes, there would be an additional period after that while staff close up the site, which has been taken into account in the consideration of whether those opening hours are acceptable, and our conclusion is that they are. In terms of the marquees, the structures aren't permanently attached to the ground in the way that a permanent building would be, but there are means of attaching them to secure them, and we're satisfied that they are reversible, so that once the three year permission would come to an end, it would be possible to clear the site and not cause any harm, but in the meantime, they're sufficiently securely attached. And in terms of the sound levels, there has been a change in the amplified sound system that the site uses since it first started to operate. I understand they originally had a few big speakers, and they've changed to a system which uses a larger number of smaller speakers to better disperse the amplified sound across the site without needing it at such a high volume. Environmental protection are satisfied that that's being well managed by the operators at a volume which is acceptable, and their observations are that the sound of residential properties around the site is either inaudible or at a level that is acceptable.
Pastor James?
Thank you. In paragraph 25, 26, food and safety, it says they have general concerns regarding management of the wider site, and have added up promotions regarding health and safety, drainage, waste provision, also about how visiting traders are managed in terms of gas safety. An email has been sent to the fire authority. I just wondered if we heard anything back from the fire authority on that?
We haven't. In terms of planning, the environmental health officers who visited the site and carried out that visit subsequent to the information that's in the report, they have written to the operators and advised what the issues that need to be addressed are. My understanding is that the operators have now instructed a consultant, a safety consultant, to look at those, and is already beginning to take action to address those.
Okay, I'll move on. About management of the sun when they're open, and they won't open some days a week now, I gather Mondays are going to be a bit of a nightmare if they might not open, but would you ever say around staff on, security staff on a Monday that you would do a Saturday officers?
I haven't got information on the levels of staffing in terms of the marshalling around the exit at closing times, which I think is the key issue in terms of managing the off-site immunity impacts in the surrounding area.
Will there be segment marshalling around the area?
Yeah, so they have a sort of a base level, if you like, where there are staff at the exit at closing time. On the busier evenings, so for example, Saturday nights, busy bank holiday weekends, they then increase that, but there would consistently be a level across the seven days.
Any other questions, councillor? Thank you, Chair. You mentioned that the catering units, where sort of like people move in for temporary periods, would that be disruption when they bring their stuff in and move it all out? Would that be set, they've got to do that in the day, or they're going to do that in the evening after it all closes?
Yeah, in the site management strategy which has been submitted, it does identify the hours within which vendors are invited to come and set up, how they manage their vehicles on and off site, and, but yeah, it happens during the daytime when the vendors are setting up ready for the evening operation. But there are, there is some additional activity with that setting up, which is outside the opening times for customers.
Pastor Graham?
Thank you. I have two questions, both about safety. One is about the exit and having only one way in and out, and the other is about food hygiene. So starting with the exits, I wonder if we could go back to the slide that shows that, because I'm wondering if two cars could pass, or if there's room for a couple of mobility scooters or buggies. But did you say cars don't actually drive in?
Okay. Yeah, there's no car parking for customers or staff here. The exit serves the existing car park, so that's the plan you were referring to. So this is the remainder of the original car park, which is still in operation as a car park, and the exit here, there is room for two cars to pass in and out, and the highway authority is satisfied that that's an acceptable means of access to the development.
Okay, I mean, it says somewhere in the report that customers will park elsewhere, and there's ample public parking round about. I don't personally know the parking in that area, but I don't know many residential sites, residential areas where people would say that there's plenty of parking. I don't know if that's been an issue over the last year or not.
In terms of public parking, there are some time limited visitor spaces, particularly around St Mary's Plain. There's the city council car park just on the opposite side across St Crispin's Road, and then at Andy Square, there are the public car parks there, and of course further down Duke Street towards the city. One of the objections that we received was concerned about visitors to the site occupying spaces which are for permit parking only, and so that's a matter which can be enforced through the permit controls. It's, other than that comment in one objection, it's not known to be a specific problem resulting from the use of the site, and given the availability of public parking around it, it's not considered that it should contribute to existing demand. It's a well accessible site by means of ranges of transport that should generate a significant amount of car parking.
Thank you. Can I ask about food hygiene now? In paragraph four, sorry, 74, it's noted that vendors will have to comply with food safety, but I wonder if there's anything to make sure that happens, given that there are scarce resources to collect it. So I'm wondering if there's a need for a condition to, if it doesn't happen already, for there to be a food safety manager on site within the management team. If you have a lot of different vendors, who and how are we going to be sure that what they're selling meets food hygiene regulations?
Given that food hygiene is covered by a different regulatory regime and licensing, it wouldn't be appropriate to, or necessary or reasonable, I should say, to require that by planning condition. Food hygiene officers are involved in monitoring the site and seeking the improvements which have been identified as being necessary, including an informative note on the planning commission, if it's granted, to remind the applicants of their need to comply with food hygiene regulations and other necessary legislation and regulations about health and safety matters is considered the best way to do that, as it's covered by the separate regimes.
Okay, is no one else, councillor Stute?
Thank you, Chair, yes. There are a number of complaints in this, and we have it in licensing as well, about, and it's listed here as litter and unsociable habits, but that's vomiting and urinating in the street, in Duke Street, and close to that. And those complaints started when this venue had a number of tents in place, temporary event notices. I just wondered if those reports of issues in that area have reduced since Covid, because the reports itself suggest that this venue is not responsible for them, but the evidence suggests that it did start when the venue opened up originally. So I just wondered if those reports have ceased or reduced significantly in recent times.
The objections that we've received do suggest that they are continuing at some level. We do have Richard Diver here from Environmental Protection who has been involved in some of the monitoring of the site. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to come in on that.
Yeah, we haven't had any recent notifications of any issues in the area. And when I have been to the area, the marshalling and the control of people leaving seems to be vastly improved to what was there during the times that we had the major problems, because it was very difficult to move on the entire population of the site in one sitting. So it was large groups, and because of that, I think there was pressure on the people to leave quickly, which meant that they weren't always visiting the toilets on the way out. Now there's vastly improved.
Okay, thank you. So therefore, can you confirm you have confidence in the management in relation to the exiting? And I ask this question because in licensing, the applicant, the license holder doesn't have responsibility for people outside of the venue, but in planning, you can actually put more restrictions in relating to immunity. So if the committee is minded to do that, this is the place to do it.
Yes, quite agree. The venue is, at the time, was very full all the time because of the fact that there was very few other places to go when all the traffic restrictions had you eating outside only. So at those times, it was extremely busy. And although the venue did their best, which all the people were aware that they were going to have to leave at a set time, those people don't always realise that they were going to need to use facilities on the site. But obviously, the management of, I believe at that time, they introduced the toilets to try and cope, and those toilets, I believe, are still in place, so their provision has increased, and there obviously was not a pressure for anyone to leave the site quickly then. The management have certainly at that time introduced litter patrols and people, although they have no right to tell people off outside the site that they were patrolling the outside side, asking people to be more responsible. There is a limited amount that they can do as an operator like that, but they have gone above and beyond what is required in the licensing.
Okay, thank you.
Pastor Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. I see under Norfolk Police Architectural Liaison Point 33, lists recommendations. I'm just wondering what's happening about these. Thank you.
Those recommendations are, the way they were set out in the response is quite generic, they're not necessarily specific to this site, and they largely relate to how the site operates rather than any matters which are the subject of this planning application. But the content of that response, I believe the applicant has seen cite of that and is aware of what the police have advised in those respects, and it's their opportunity to take on that advice.
Thank you. How's your chair?
I just want a little bit of clarity in relation to the flood risks, which I assume have to do with the hard surfacing which goes around the site, which I appreciate the applicant can't do anything about. It tells me that there's no, there's no issue of phosphorus or nitrate pollution as a result of this. I was just wondering if, in relation to the amount of food wastes and litter that might be coming off the site, if there is, you know, are we sure that there is no pollution happening as a result of this site and the litter that's accumulating as a result, considering that we've had lots of people saying that there is litter?
Yeah, we have made an assessment of the proposal in relation to the nutrient neutrality issues in terms of nitrates and phosphate pollution. Specifically, we've been looking at that in terms of the volume of people that would be using the site and those which would be coming from outside the catchments and creating additional activity in the city, which within those catchments can affect those catchments that might otherwise happen. The, in the context of, in the context of the existing site, in the context of the site in relation to the wider city centre and the catchments as a whole, we are satisfied that the numbers, the amount of activity and the type of activity is sufficiently low that it wouldn't have any impact on those catchments, and that there is no further assessment to be made in terms of nutrient neutrality.
Okay, thank you very much. The recommendation is to approve, and I'll remove that. Have a look, second over that. Thank you, councillor Sands. Discussions, anyone? Councillor Sands?
I appreciate the plau'd, the desire of the people developing and running this to extend their business, but one thing that does concern me is the desire to have the place open till 10:30 on a Sunday night. I believe, in my opinion, is that 10 o'clock is plenty late enough, and I wondered if we can put a condition to maintain 10 o'clock as a closing time on a Sunday night, given that it's the following morning is the start of the working week?
Yeah, Jay, it might help members to know that the current licence for this premises is up until 10 o'clock each day, seven days a week. So, and clearly there was a reason why we did put that in place in the licensing committee. Should this be approved, they won't be able to operate their licence until these later times, until a new hearing has been had, if there is a need for a hearing, if there are objections at licensing. So there has to be a new licensing application. So it is for members to decide whether the extended hours are suitable. And basically, this was a follow-up to councillor Sands' suggestion to make a change, and this is an opportunity for members to do that.
Any other discussion? There's no recommendation for anything, but has the sanity moved to 10 o'clock? Indeed, second.
I knew that was a proposal, so if someone would like to take a minute.
That's a right.
I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussions, anything else, anyone?
Sorry, just to kind of make a converse point about the licensing process, I mean, if the committee, I know, I've been entitled to, but if you vote restricting hours till 22:00 and then an application, but the two processes don't tie up, they don't have to tie up. But equally, if you vote through the planning process to restrict the hours till 22:00, and an application is made to extend the licence till 22:30 or 23:00, and that is approved, they won't be able to use that. They would then have to come back and vary the condition. So, I mean, we made the recommendation to 22:30 on the planning grounds. It doesn't really matter, in that respect, what the licence condition is, you need to make a decision on planning grounds. As I say, the two don't tie up, they don't have to tie up. You're making a decision on planning grounds.
Pastor Love?
Well, on hearing that, I think it would possibly be best to leave it to the licensing committee, which will take evidence and hear from those people who live around, and leave it to them to decide.
Okay. Anyone else? Let's have a look, councillor. Will you move?
I would second what councillor Lubbock has just said.
Yeah. A councillor?
I would second what councillor Sands has just said, on the basis of immunity.
Okay. Does the chairman want your part?
I'd like to just clarify, I was only talking about Sunday nights. So it really, it's a half hour change over the whole thing, and I think that is a very reasonable proposition. I believe people do need a little bit of downtime in their homes on the Sunday nights and around in the streets.
Your opposition?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that there's also the temporary event notice legislation, which means that they may, on a bank holiday, wish to extend their time on a Sunday. So that would give that flexibility for them to operate till 10:30, whereas if it's restricted till 10, they wouldn't be able to do it on a bank holiday.
Thank you. Well, let's move to the second, councillor.
Just in relation to the discussion points, I would just recommend for the applicant to consider advising the vendors to maybe reduce their use and reliance on disposable and plastic, and I appreciate that the nature of the venue kind of relies on that kind of stuff, and I appreciate that's not strictly planning, but I feel that this is an opportunity just to echo that, maybe there's more environmental ways to serve food.
We wouldn't come back to that, we're still on the time for a Sunday night.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
That's the way you set it down, I said that. No one else to speak? All those in favour? You did. You do want to move?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All those in favour of the recommendation to truss at 10 o'clock on a Sunday?
This is the amendment that has been moved by councillor Sands to councillor Graham. It is to reduce the time to 22:00 hours on a Sunday.
Yeah.
So that's voting in favour is councillor Sands, Mike, councillor Susans, councillor Graham, councillor Thomas.
Thank you. All those against?
Against. Those voting against are councillors Pete, Lubbock, Davis, and Driver.
Stetson.
And those abstaining are councillors Champion, councillor Young, and councillor Stute.
The boo is tied.
Is tied, so this chair's casting motion.
She's a bloody place, I think that's why he's my caster, but this one as well, he's cast and staying, but again, thank you.
So the recommendation now remains at 22:30.
Anyone else who's to speak on?
You've now voted, Matt, so it's time to talk about them.
No one else to speak? Councillor Stute?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think on planning grounds, there's no reason why this site can't be used within the application, and it really is all about management. So there are still some concerns about management, and we've heard that in licensing as well. But on planning grounds, there's no reason to vote against this. It's unusual, actually, it's a shame that we haven't had any members of the public come to speak, and it's unusual that councillors from the ward don't come and address these issues as well. They will have another opportunity, if members are minded to vote for this, they will have another opportunity in licensing, probably.
Okay, thank you. A councillor, any other?
Thank you, Chair. I'm up in some art exhibitions recently at the shoe factory, and I actually think it would be really beneficial for us to be open during the daytime, so more people can, rather than just leaving that area and going into the city to find somewhere to eat, I think it would be really beneficial for the shoe factory as well, for the exhibitions, and if this was open during the day, and people could come and go, hang around, get something to eat, and use St Mary's works.
Pastor Love?
Yes, yes, I think that that's a good suggestion. Often people do combine something to eat, a drink, with a visit to, you know, some other activity. I think we did have members of the public here when this was last approved, and I think I did vote against it. But I think it's changed in its, in this application. I suppose they've learnt, the circumstances have changed because we're not in a pandemic, and they've obviously learnt, and people have come to understand that, you know, living in a city, sometimes there are, you know, concessions to be made about areas like this. And so I feel that what's put in place now seems to be far more acceptable than what was before, and it's proved, because we don't have any members of the public here. And that's why I think it's probably best to leave licensing to do their job, and it's another opportunity for members to come forward. But I am swayed by the fact that they have proved themselves, and that, you know, in the next three years, it is a limited period, and the conditions put in place, hopefully, will make it amenable to people who do live in the area. And after the three years, then we hope something will come forward for permanent immune, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what councillor Lubbock said, and councillor Stute, and that is, they're the point everybody's said. I also believe it actually to have this open and something there is safer for the area as well, to leave a bigger space there, and especially at night time when there's not that many people about around that area. There will be people around there who will make it safer for people walking back from further in the city, walking back that way to go home. So the more people about, the better that will be. And if there is anything were to happen, I mean, people shouldn't be wearing or whatever with people's guns, they should be enforcing that, the police should be enforcing that, arresting them and prosecuting them. You can't always put this down to the vendors, these might be coming from, I don't know, anywhere in the city, walking home, and we're trying to make it there, they need to use toilets and, so we can't put all the pressure on the venue. But I believe, I've never been to the venue, but I believe it's quite good, the people I know who have been there really enjoy it, so I should be voting in favour of this recommendation. I'll move to vote now. All those in favour of the recommendation, please show. That's you now, Miss. Thank you very much. Goodbye, thank you.
Apologies, members, I forgot to put page numbers on the running order. Next slide is on page fourteen nine.
Well, there we go, we move on to our second planning application for today, that is four B. And this is on the police station. I think we know where it is, it's about two yards away and we're opposite. So if we get our planning officer taking through this, Catherine, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, apologies. Sorry, that wasn't a good start. There we go. Um, so as Keith said, you should know where it is, it is literally attached to City Hall. Um, the proposal before us today is, um, includes several elements. Ultimately, it is a refurbishment of the police station to bring it up to modern day policing standards and rework some areas, um, including works to the roof and also the courtyard, which is, I'm sure you're aware, both City Hall and the police station overlook to the rear. I'll just go through some updates to committee from Get Stuck In. Um, the first update on the list is additional consultation response. The, um, both City Hall and Police Station are grade two star listed, so we consulted at Stroke England. Um, they commented a few times, um, and the update on the update report is their last comment. They are confirming that they will support our, um, proposal to condition the details of the rooftop plant and any screening. I'm happy that with this condition that, um, there wouldn't be any significant interruption to the line above parapet when you're looking at the facade at the front. We've also received an additional representation for this item. We've had, um, two people comment and this additional representation is an additional letter from one of those people. Um, he raised a few points which I've addressed in the update sheet. The first one, he was querying the details around the proposed construction noise informative. So that is a standard informative that we add on, um, which follows on from environmental protection advice. It's about being a considerate neighbour when you're building, um, doing any building works. The second comment he made was about the proposed dog kennel. I went back to the agent and discussed this and there's actually an existing dog kennel in the courtyard and it's not used for the police dogs. The police dogs are all kept within the police bands. It's used as an emergency kennel. So it might be that someone passes away and has a dog and the dog needs to be kept somewhere. It might be that an individual is taken into custody and they have a dog and again, need to be kept somewhere. So it's not something that they use excessively, but it is something that every police station, um, is required to have. The other concern raised was about the need for wash bay, um, for their cars. This has been addressed by a proposed additional condition limiting the use of the wash bay. Um, the final item raised was proposal to introduce seat and roof onto the rear extension. Um, whilst from an environmental point of view, this is, um, commendable, in this location, both the design, um, and style wouldn't really lend itself, um, to a seat and roof. So this isn't something, as officers that we, um, discussed with the agent. And the final update is, um, an omission in my report, it's the nutrient neutrality section, um, which you may all be familiar with by now. Um, but we've assessed the report, uh, assessed proposal in relation to nutrient neutrality. And because it's not significantly extending the use of the building or bringing any, um, subsequent, um, number of officers directly into the, um, capture area, we are confident that it's not going to have impact. Um, so you're aware, we are currently sat around here. Um, the police station is attached to us and this bit here is dating from the nineteen thirties as well. And on the corner is, um, a nineteen sixties extension. And as this plan nicely shows, there's, um, all sorts of, um, small buildings, port cabins, that type of thing in the courtyard at the moment. As well as being a grade two star listed building, um, the site's also been a conservation area. So when we look at heritage, um, concerns and heritage impact, we need to consider both the impact on the individual building and the wider context. Firstly, apologies for all the numbers and the small writing. This is an existing site plan which also has site levels, um, which is all figures, so a topographical plan. Um, the existing kennel is down here. And these are all used as ancillary buildings to the police office, uh, police station, including storage. This is their proposed site plan. Um, so this building down here at the bottom is their proposed extension. And then there's a proposed carport, which would be a, um, tripizoid type roof, so sort of inverse, um, inverse roof. And then you've got various ancillary things around here. Um, I think this one's the dog kennel. You've got some external plant, um, some cycle storage. I think this is motorcycle storage, you've got bins and then up here is the wash bay area, which I mentioned before, um, to allow the police fans and cars to be cleaned. So I'll just take you through some floor plans. Um, this is the existing basement floor and as you can see, um, here, these are all the original cells. Um, this is a ground floor, the first floor. Of note is the constable's office, which is this room here, the chief constable's office. And second, third floor, which is largely, um, the internal walls have largely been taken out and it's quite a modern feel to it already. And this is the existing roof plan. So proposed rear extension would be a, um, single monopinch style. It would attach to a current, um, sort of polycarbonate roof here, which is effectively an external walkway alongside the original cells. It would be finished in cladding, um, it'd be tying exactly where the existing polycarbonate roof is, so sit fairly low and it would serve as, um, a storage facility for the police. This is quite a useful section, um, which just demonstrates how the building sits within the courtyard. Um, so as you can see, it sort of steps down in. Again, apologies for the writing. Um, this is a heritage plan, so it identifies all the key aspects within the building at present and which, um, would be useful to or beneficial to retain, um, which there's less concerns about retaining. Um, this is the chief constable's office. The original plan was to have a tidy wall along here entirely. Um, but because this is one of the, identified as one of the key, um, rooms within the building, we negotiated with the agents and this has now been reduced to, um, sort of walls either side. So you would still read it as an existing one room, um, or previously an existing one room. And there's, um, various items in here which are historic. There's an old nineteen thirties cabinet which is set into the wall, which, um, the conditions again will ensure that they were they are retained. There's nothing really significant going on on these floors. As I said, it's mostly fairly modern already. Um, the rooftop changes, um, have been negotiated on. Originally, the two largest elements here were sighted on this part of the roof. Um, we felt that that would be more visible, both from metal street and potentially wider views from the forum, in front of the forum. So following discussions, these have now been pushed to the back. There is a parapet on the roof like there is on City Hall. Their parapet measures point seven metres and these items, their mechanical ventilation, um, units measure two metres. So the impact, um, would be relatively minimal because of the sighting, um, but it can be mitigated further by screening. So initial discussions with the agent indicate that that might be, um, sort of vinyl covering on the units, um, to colour match the roof so it's all blends in rather than stands, contrast in colour. Um, but again, a condition which would be added to, um, approve those details. Um, this indicates some of the repairs that are proposed. So the application, um, is a combined planning application, listed building application. So as part of the listed building application, there's various repairs and sort of tweaks, if you like, um, proposed to just to maintain the building and bring it up to, um, more modern standard. Uh, these are the elevations, so you'll see the rear extension here, um, the proposed units on the roof up here. Um, we've also got two staircases proposed, um, one of which is to access, uh, provide access between the two height levels, two sections from the sixties, um, part and the thirties part. And another one, um, provide access from an open terrace, which will make a bit more sense in a minute. Um, these are some three defiscalizations that the agents have provided to indicate that the revised sighting of the plant would have a minimal impact. Um, so this is, all of these rather are both from St Giles Street, um, and this is from Bethel Street, looking towards the market down here. This is the second staircase that I mentioned, so there's like an open terrace balcony, um, on the top floor and this staircase is proposed to provide access from that up to the roof. Um, more significant works were originally proposed to the entrance, however, these have been reduced down. Um, we had some concerns, but it was primarily driven by the applicant and the agent to reduce the design. So it's more about sort of tidying up the area and sort of changing around sides and that type of thing now. This is the proposed carport. Um, this plan indicates, um, any repairs that are going on. So this is the seals of the windows, um, that are just going to be repaired. Uh, new windows are proposed in the nineteen sixties extension. Um, they wouldn't be exactly like for like, but they're sort of basically more modern material and, uh, colour matched to to the, um, windows on the thirties section. I'll just take you through some pictures. Um, so that's with the forum to the left and so the rooftop plants would be sighted by, um, further back in that part of the roof. Um, that's again the nineteen thirties section here, sixties bit on the corner. And sixties section with a, um, rather attractive lift on side, um, that lift is going to be removed. Just looking down towards the courtyard. This, um, these group of terraces here are the closest residents to the site and this is where the two, um, letters of objection come from. So this is the rear of the police station and then the extension would come here and all of these units would be removed as part of the proposal. And these are the two, um, blocks, terrace boxes, again, I mentioned before. This is a view from the, um, grass area next to St Giles, um, street looking towards the rear of the police station. Um, so again, you'd see the rooftop plant, um, slightly there. These just give you a feel for the sort of height difference between the site and the rest of the area around. And this is the polycarbonate roof that I mentioned before with the original cell windows there. Um, that's one of the cell doors. As part of the proposal, some of the existing cells don't have doors anymore and they're proposing to retain two cells. And so the, um, proposal is to make sure that the two retained cells have two of the original doors retained as well. Um, this is one of the internal doors which has been previously moved and they're proposing to reinstate it in its original position. This is the, um, third floor terrace that I mentioned where the staircase was going to be inserted. At the moment, it's just accessed by one of these ladders, which is an ideal in terms of safety. Um, so the key considerations, um, are the principle of development, the design, heritage and the immunity. Um, the building was built as a police station and has always been used as such since it's considered to be appropriate to retain this use. The, um, wake up, pardon? So the building is being designed as a police station, so its continued use is supported in terms of, in terms of design. The single store extension would be relatively contemporary in design, um, but it would be finished in cladding, which would be in sympathetic colour to the rest of the building and it would be seen in, um, comparable to the existing ancillary buildings at the moment, sort of tucked down into the courtyard. So the impact on the listed building isn't considerably significant from that point of view. Um, the other buildings, including the dog kennel, um, carport, cycle shelter and, um, the bin shelters, the details that we have got are considered acceptable. Some of them we haven't got details for, so we would add a condition asking for those prior to any installation. Now, the proposal is being revised, um, notably to move that rooftop plant further in and a few other things were also included. So, um, these critter windows along this, um, third floor terrace would also be retained. The impact upon the listed building is considered to be acceptable. Some of the works are actually considered to result in a benefit to the, to the building. Um, where there are elements of harm, this harm is limited to less than substantial. Um, and from a heritage point of view, the retention and the support of the use as a police station is considered to be a positive thing and so that weighs in the consideration as well. In terms of immunity, um, we note that there are residents in, um, the vicinity. It is a city centre location, so we do expect some level of noise and disturbance in the city centre. However, this has been taken into consideration. And as previously noted, we are going to, proposing to add the informative about mainly working during the development period. And our environmental protection colleagues have been in negotiating, negotiation with the applicant in terms of the proposed plant work and have looked at the noise that that would, that would create and looked at the calculations and are happy that the impact in terms of noise is acceptable. One of the reasons this is the case is that the distance is fairly significant and also the height. So by putting all the plant, or most of the plant on the roof and the residential flooding has been so much lower, that in itself produces the impact. The other thing that we are proposing to do is condition the use of the jet wash facility. As most police stations are, this police station is used twenty four seven. And there are shifts that finish at time of hours that most of us are in bed. So we didn't really want them to be using it in the middle of the night. And so by conditioning the use between seven in the morning and eleven o'clock on any day, we felt that was a reasonable, reasonable condition to allow them to still use it effectively, but minimise the impact on neighbours. They are proposing external lighting. We haven't got details of that. So a condition for that would also ensure that there aren't any particularly significant impact in terms of shining lights directly into, towards any residents. In terms of transport, they are proposing sort of to keep it fairly similar to their current provision. So they're keeping car parking on site, police vans, police cars and police motorbikes. We don't have a standard within our local plan that explicitly says what we expect for police stations. So we have been guided by what they say that they need. And they're happy that this will meet their operational requirements. So in conclusion, with the proposed conditions for both the planning application and listed building consent, we're happy that the impact is acceptable and complies with policies and is a recommendable approval. Any questions?
Thank you, Catherine, for that. It's been a good report. I don't know what's said or why we remember that. I went and went and remembered ourselves, so that was quite good. I'd just like to ask one question about traffic very pat outside on Bethel Street or whatever it is, it's a peanut street over there all the time. Will they still be using all that area or will they be moving to the car park to a more public park outside?
I believe they'll still be using the road as well.
So there will be more cars coming into?
Well, the use isn't going, the proposed works aren't going to result in an intensification use. So we're not expecting more offices. They're slightly changing the way they work, but it shouldn't lead to more cars as a result.
Thank you for the very extensive report, very clear and answered a lot of the questions I had. I do have one question, though I don't think it's been covered, so excuse me if you did. Many years ago, of course, it used to be a car park there where councillors used to park before it was condemned. I remember walking across it to come in, you know, the back door. When, when the car park was taken away, the condemned car park, it always, and to this day, looked pretty rough and ready down there with the walls, the existing walls that were holding up the car park. And I wondered if there was anything in the plans to make that look better, if you like. I mean, I, I agree about, you know, all the extensions and the necessary work. It's mainly the fact that they're trying to make it all blend in and work with the heritage listed building. But those walls still look like it's been done yesterday and nothing's been done to them, if you see what I mean. Is there, are there any plans to, for want of a better word, beautify the surroundings of the new building?
Sure, absolutely agree with you. I did mention it to the agent and applicant on site. And we, as a council, actually lease the land to them. So as they understood it, we as a council own the retaining walls. So the right proposals as part of this application to beautify or renovate it.
So basically down to us, if I can say yes.
Sorry, can I just, just add to that? I mean, some of the, the kind of wider context of the site is that over time, we as a council have looked at redeveloping that site as well as the site on which the wing of the City Hall would have been built, that had been completed. And I think the, these haven't obviously come to fruition, but the intention is still ultimately to redevelop that site. And I think the, the improvements that you're looking for will come about through, through that kind of longer term process. I mean, I totally accept what you're saying, it doesn't look great. But they'll, they'll hopefully come about through that longer term process.
I thought I was going to say council or something. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. In paragraph fifty four, about the Chief Constable's office, what is actually going to be removed from there? So you said the cupboard will remain, but how much caressing and architrave will be lost?
Sorry, I'm going to just go back to the plan. I did loads of photos. We don't, to answer the question briefly, we don't have a cross section at the moment, but that would be part of the condition. They want to use it as sort of restroom profuses, so sort of canteen type place. And they initially wanted it divided. So we'll get there in a minute. So this bit up here, so these two bits of wall would be added there. When we're on site, we did have that discussion around, as you say, the architraves and skirting and that type of thing. And they're well aware that we don't want them to take out any more than is absolutely necessary.
Anyone else have any questions?
A question about the roof space. Is there any plan for, for water harvesting on the carports and for solar on the roof? I was very disappointed when I saw the picture of the terraces because I imagined that they don't have a nice leisure area on top because everybody needs a break, some nice outdoor space. But is anything like that planned that would be appropriate to require it?
Sorry, I'm just trying to relieve the lighting. In terms of water harvesting, I haven't been told there's any proposals for that. So no, there's no details on that. If they're trying to breathe into the twenty first century and to future proof, should we not ask them to consider it?
I, I, I think there's a number of, I mean, first of all, it isn't part of the proposal. So would you refuse it because it isn't part of the proposal? So I hear what you're saying in terms of encouraging people to do some of these things. But once, once it gets to the stage where you're, you're here considering it as a, a, a committee, you've basically got the application in front of you. So I think the, the, the response to your, your question is that it doesn't propose any rainwater harvesting as part of this proposal. Could it? I suppose the answer is maybe it could. But I guess kind of set against that is that it's, we don't know what the implications of doing that would be for the listed building. So at the moment, you're faced with a, with an application that doesn't include any, any, any proposals for rainwater harvesting and need to determine on that, on that basis unless I'm told on. It doesn't contain rainwater harvesting, does it?
I was also asking about solar and I would like to ask about the glazing on the windows. Will it be an insulation? I can see your point that we're probably not going to refuse it on the basis that it isn't there, but perhaps it would be inappropriate to put in an informative? In terms of the solar panels, those little grey squares are solar panels. So it's not the characteristic ones. In terms of the windows, I mean, we haven't been given any information. We don't normally seek information in terms of how thermal efficient windows are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Lobb?
Yes, I, I agree with Councilor Graham. I mean, this is public money being used for refurbishment here. And, and we don't see any, apart from the, the solar panels, we don't see any attempt to use any grey water, to catch water or, or to have any sort of ambition to, to do what we know when you refurbish a building, you should do, you know, double glazing, what, what capture of water and those sorts of basic things. You know, when, when, when are we going to see this sort of thing coming forward? I mean, we, we as householders know it. Why, why don't those who are refurbishing their public buildings for, you know, public use, why don't they know that they should be doing these things?
Okay, Counselor Lobb, that's all our discussion bit there. But I, I agree with what you both said, that they have a walkabout, they have a whole house on concern, that sort of. Or even washing their cars with rainwater coming off the roof. Which is called three, but questions, questions going, going, going. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted a bit of clarity. You briefly mentioned the cedum roof. Can I just have a bit of clarity in relation to that, please?
Yes, I mentioned it at the beginning, it was referring to an update. So one of the representations he mentioned in his letter that he felt that a cedum roof could be suitable for the rear extension. They didn't propose a cedum roof. They proposed a building that, or an extension that is clad the same on the roof as the walls. So it sort of sits fairly innocuously in the courtyard level and isn't, isn't intrusive. In some locations, we would certainly discuss and try and promote cedum roofs. We just didn't particularly feel that this was one of those locations to do that. Partially or primarily driven by design and the fact that it's obviously a greatly stylistic building. The proposal that was before us, we have to assess. And it was acceptable in terms of heritage and design terms. So it's not something that we pushed in this occasion.
Thank you. Your recommendations, Counselor Stu?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just one, one question on, on heritage. We're being asked again, the committee, to accept some harm to heritage assets. And we're being asked to balance that out with the, with the benefits. And so again, it's finely balanced. But the paragraph fifty four, Counselor Davis has already mentioned, the Chief Constable's office, are the proposals for that something that's absolutely necessary for the continuation of this as a, as a police station? Or are they proposing this just because it's desirable for them? And so I suppose the follow up question to that is if the count, if the committee was minded to refuse this today, would it still function as a police station? Because that seems to be one of the major reasons we're being asked to accept it.
So sorry, just to clarify, the, the concerns around the Chief Constable's office?
Yes, well, and other, other, lots of other heritage elements. So the cells, for example, and the, the addition of the staircase. All of these things, we're, we're being asked to balance up against the, against the continued use and wider benefits. But specifically about the Chief Constable's office, is it absolutely necessary for them to, to carry out the works in there? Or are they proposing this just because it's desirable for them?
From my understanding of the application, it's, it's a mixture. So there are some places, like the basement, where they've got, I've forgotten exactly how many, let's say ten cells, that are sat there doing nothing. And so that isn't a functional part of the building anymore. They've got storage that is, you know, on hallways at the moment, it's just not working for them. So they need to renovate it to ensure it's continued use. You could argue in some cases that some proposals are, if you like, what they preferred rather than essentially hundred percent operationally necessary. But our job is to assess what they submit to us. So we've negotiated on that, Chief Constable's office. They initially had it completely divided and a door accessing the new smaller section into the hallway. So they've removed that door and as we've talked about, reduced that division. So I guess arguably, they could still use it as a police station if they didn't divide that, but we've got to assess it as a whole. So there are other things that they are doing that we consider to be a benefit.
So can I just come back on that? I mean, one of the, through you, Chair. One of the kind of key issues about the preservation of listed buildings is that the best use of them is as they were originally designed. And these, these, these changes will enable the building to be, to be retained for the purpose for which it was designed. The listed building regulations don't exist to prevent any, any changes at all. They, neither do the planning regulations, obviously, but they exist to kind of moderate those changes to a level which is acceptable. And that's the stage that we've got to with this one. They've been negotiated, you can still read the history. You can still read the history of the building as it's evolved through time and no building is static. And the needs of, of the operator, even though it's the original use, will change over time. So in terms of the level of harm caused, there is always a, 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 a level of harm, but I think we, we've negotiated. Yeah, when you're, when you're altering listed buildings, you're making changes. So you're effectively harming the, 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 the fabric. But we work towards a point where you minimise that harm. And here we're, I think we're quite clearly in a, at a point where it's less than substantial and actually probably towards the lower end of less than substantial harm. So your conservation officer is happy with it, Historic England are happy with it. So from a conservation point of view, I think in this instance, it's not the finely balanced decision that, or the balanced decision that perhaps that other, other cases that have come before this committee have been. I think we're, we're pretty comfortable with the, 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 the kind of balance, the weight that we've attached to the benefits is that the level of harm is, is relatively low. So hence the recommendation to you.
Thank you. We'll move on. Counselor Graham?
Thank you. I want to support this application. And that's an obvious benefit to seeing the police station kept where it is and made fit for purpose for the next century. I'm not convinced that they've done that by not future proofing and presumably they have to.
This is a question to the Plan Office. What recommendation for us to look into? Are we not on comments yet?
We're not.
We're still on questions?
Yes, this is still a question.
Oh, didn't sound like one.
Well, I was getting there. Sorry, I've lost my thread now. I was basically saying, would it be appropriate for us to either put in a condition about thermal future proofing in terms of thermal insulation and the like? Or even to refuse it until they've done it? I mean, obviously I want to see the refurbishment go ahead, but it would be a huge missed opportunity because if they don't do it now, they're not going to do it for a generation perhaps. And if we can influence it moving in a climate friendly direction, then it's. And if we can influence it moving in a climate friendly direction, then it's incumbent on us to do that.
Well, I think there's a recommendation that shouldn't come next time.
I'm happy to, I'd be blunt, I think the response to the answer to your question is no. Because you need to remember that certainly in terms of the windows, some of these are only before you because it's listed building. And when you're considering listed building applications, you're only looking at the impact upon the character of the listed buildings. You're not looking at the impacts, you're not looking at the thermal efficiency of the replacement windows. For example, the critical windows that are in the building at the moment would require potentially quite substantial works to them and to the fabric of the listed building to actually improve their thermal efficiency. That's not part of this application. You don't have the information before you to determine whether or not doing that would be acceptable from a heritage point of view. If we have an application to do that, then that's the point where we weigh the benefits of the harm to the listed building against, sorry, we weigh the harm to the listed building that may be caused by those alterations against the benefits of providing greater thermal efficiency. We're not actually looking at replacing the majority of those windows. There are new windows, replacement windows in some parts of the building, but not all. You need, we also don't have policies that say you must have, for example, rainwater harvesting or you must have cedam roofs. Whether or not we should have those policies is a matter for debate elsewhere, I think. But you need to determine the application that's before you on the basis of what it proposes, not on what you might like it to propose in the future. Whilst I have sympathy with what you're saying, that's what you need to do as a committee. Not, you need to approve, approve or refuse what's before you, not look at what you might like to be before you. And that's sometimes a difficult thing to do. You might have to do it through gritted teeth, but that's essentially what you're asked to do.
Councillor Lobb?
Yes, I've got a lot of sympathy for what councillor Graham was trying to say. And I understand what the planning officer has told us. I just think, I just wonder how long these clusters are going to keep this place going. I mean, in the city, in the centre of this city, we have what is a basement where there's car washing going on, car parking, dog kennels, bin stores for everyone to see. And I just wonder whether, and all the car parking that goes on outside the police station, is this a building that's fit for purpose? I think probably the answer is no. We lease it as a council to them. And yet we have before us something that we don't feel, well, I certainly don't, and councillor Graham doesn't feel that we want to support because it doesn't enhance the city centre in conservation terms. And I don't think it enhances the listed buildings. We would like to see something more permanent there. But if we're going to have to accept this refurbishment, we want to see it fit for purpose. And I just think, you know, it isn't fit for purpose. It's just sort of extending their tenure until they perhaps do have to find somewhere that fits, you know, what a modern police station looks like. But really, just walking across the back there, it looks pretty, well, you know, it just doesn't look fit for a city centre conservation area and enhancing the listed buildings around it. So obviously, a lot of the conversation has gone on behind the scenes to decide that, yes, the police can do what they like and as the.
What was your question? What was your question? Is this place fit for purpose? Because I heard that question, but I heard another one.
You can have that one. Is it fit for purpose? By titubating here and there and not doing anything really to enhance the listed building?
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, all right. Sorry, can I come back on that? It's a grade two star listed building. As I said, it's retained, the proposal is to retain it in its existing use. So I'm sure perhaps the police might like to demolish it and redevelop it and actually have a groundbreaking new building on the site, which they could potentially, they're designed to modern standards. But I think we'd get to a position where doing that from a conservation point of view wouldn't be any more acceptable than what I'm kind of hearing from some members is the result of this proposal. It's difficult to keep heritage assets going at times. So I think what you're getting is, or the proposal before you, as I say, has been assessed by your own conservation officers and Historic England. And they are happy with the proposals. So from their point of view and from our point of view as officers, the harm that's been caused to this building as a result of the proposals is less than substantial and relatively low. And you're keeping the police station in the, and you're allowing the police to keep on doing their job in the city centre in a building that does enhance and contribute to the city centre. So it's not as straightforward as the building fit for purpose should it become then demolished and rebuilt. Is this proposal acceptable as it stands? And I mean, our recommendation, in particular from a heritage point of view, our recommendation to you is that it is.
Thank you. These questions seem to be common.
If I may just ask one more question, I hope my questions are succinct. Purely in relation to the fact that I understood that part of the, one of the policies is in relation to biodiversity. But I see nothing in relation to biodiversity in the plan before me. Or have I overlooked it, sorry? Is there any increase in biodiversity?
There is indeed a local, there is indeed a policy within our local plan about biodiversity. It does encourage enhancements and talks about mitigation. We haven't got anything explicitly at this site that would provide an enhancement. We don't think there's any harm from the proposals. Our policy at the moment doesn't, we, you may be aware that there's biodiversity net gain coming in the future. That isn't in place at the moment. On sites like this, it is very hard to see or sort of add a clear benefit. When there's no soft landscaping, it's a heavily lit part of the city. So if we're looking at installing boxes, then you would limit what species would actually use them. So basically, no, there isn't considered anything, I'm sure.
Thank you. The recommendation is to approve and move that, but I'm second now. Thank you, councillor Sands. Comments? Anyone? Councillor Sands and councillor Champion?
Thank you, Chair. There's a lot of questions there that have drifted into the realm of commentary. If we look at the history of this area, I mean, going back to around about, was it 2005? The whole city hall was very nearly lost to develop as a hotel. And back then, the terrace was taken down because it'd been gerrymilled back in the 1930s to be finished in a hurry. There's a couple of interesting photographs of downed German aircraft put on display in that terrace. I mean, this whole thing, I mean, we've drifted around in a whole bunch of ifs and buts. The reality is, this does need improvement. If we were going to spend tens of millions, yeah, I'd say let's go ahead and rebuild the terrace and do all sorts of lovely things and extend the city hall while we're at it. But we're not, we're talking about tidying up this area. At the moment, it is a hodgepodge of buildings down there, sheds and other things. And the way I read this proposal, it is a tidying up that will improve the general appearance of this whole area. So I honestly don't see why we've had this ridiculous drifting around of irrelevant commentary concerning how ugly this area is. We all know it's ugly, but this is going to improve it. It's a short term situation because at some stage in the future, this will come up for redevelopment and that will be a whole city hall plan where the original terrace is reinstated in some fashion. So I will approve this because I think we need to put a close to it and move on.
Well, we're referring to reality, as was just referred to, and to an earlier comment about passing planning applications through gritted teeth. I believe quite honestly that the council needs to review its policies in relation to a lot of different aspects. We are in the midst of a climate and ecological emergency, as has been, you know, the councillors agree to this. And I'm pretty, I'm sorry, councillor Sands, if I'm frustrating you by making a further comment. Purely in relation to reality, sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm going to make this comment. The cedam roof being dismissed and not being allowed would have allowed for biodiversity increase. It is something that we should be pushing for, that the cabinet should be raising the standard of policies within the council. If this is a point of discussion, there is no other opportunity for me to make this point. So I'm making this point right here, right now. The comments made earlier about water catchment, about the cedam roof, about biodiversity increase, these are all relevant, they're all pertinent. They are not needing the whole development to be knocked down and rebuilt again. And I think it's something that the council should be taking very seriously and not dismissing as a waste of time and as a frustration and as an annoyance. We've lost half of all UK biodiversity since the Industrial Revolution. We desperately need to do something about it. Whether a cedam roof would make any impact on that, I believe that it is, we should be making every opportunity. And that is up to the council and the cabinet to be making improvements to the policies that we are voting on. Because otherwise, as has been commented today, we make a judgment call through gritted teeth. I will be voting to approve this because overall, balance, it is good and necessary. But I do think these points are pertinent and I think they're important. And I think this is one of the forums and one of the opportunities to say as much.
I wonder what you say to councillor Champion, but I won't make much difference to councillor Policy. You need to send this to your leader of your group to really have, or when she have meetings with our leader, the ruler of the group, they can discuss these kind of things and put a group cabinet, change the policies or take it to a committee, but we can't change the policy in planning committee. So it's not really done here. And councillor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think many of the restrictions that we have are at national level rather than local level. But I would of course like to see us have a look at it at the local level. But I thought the questions and debates so far are actually quite interesting and engaging. My concern with this particular application is that it's disappointing because we're losing heritage assets. And I think there was an alternative and the alternative would have been a slightly larger extension to the side, which is certainly less than substantial harm because it's much lower than the original building. And actually, it would have been acceptable to have that. And those heritage assets that we can a lot lose will be gone forever. I think it's a shame. But as officers have explained on planning grounds, there is very little to object to. Overall, it's just disappointing. Thank you.
Councillor Sands, sue you?
I'm going to be a bit pragmatic. I don't work in this building, so I don't know what the situation is and what it is like to deal with, how it's currently set out and the conditions that police officers and people who work in the office deal with. So for me, it's a straightforward improvement of working conditions for the people within the building. So I will be approving this.
Councillor Lobb?
Yes, I understand they need the refurbishment and I'd like to support it. But with a bit more thought, we could have had something such as huge containers on the roof to capture water in the city centre where there's so much concrete. We could have had, you know, a real tidying up of the smaller buildings down below to make it look a bit more acceptable. And you even could have had some vegetation on the roof to hide some of the plant. And I've seen that in some city centres, which is really quite attractive to look up and see on a listed building roof, actually some vegetation to hide the plant that's up there. I think with a bit more thought, I'd be supportive of it. But I just think, you know, they may only be there for another five years. But it is five years that needs to be considered alongside the changes to our environment. And I just don't think any thought has gone into this. And I come back to the fact that we are the people who have leased the building to the police. Do we not have any opportunities to have these discussions with them? Yes, you can do this and that, but we would like to see you do these improvements. And I say, I expect there'll come a time when it's not fit for purpose and they'll go to some other building. I've got no idea about them pulling the building down, but they will find that it's not suitable and they will go to a purpose built building elsewhere. And then we will have the discussion about what you use the building for. But while they are there, I think they should, like any other public office, make some, give some acceptance that we are in a climate crisis and do something about it, however small that might be. But in this instance, they have done absolutely nothing to acknowledge that. And so I just don't feel I can support it. And it doesn't take much, but it does take something to get me to support it.
Anyone else wish to speak? Our recommendation is to approve, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favour of Councillor Shell?
Those members voting in favour are councillors Driver, councillor Susans, councillor Mike Sands, councillor Stukely, councillor Viv Thomas and councillor Peak.
All those against, Councillor Shell? And then best honour stations?
And please keep your hands up for her.
Thank you.
So those abstaining are councillors Champion, councillor Young, councillor Graham, councillor Lubbock and councillor Davis. That has been carried because of the numbers of extensions.
Thank you.
Has nobody voted against, okay?
Can we have a break for 10 minutes? Can I apologize for people that are here? I need a drink to start here. I need a drink to start here with the. On a quick point, I will make, I understand there was a crew in the ladies, that's probably because the builders don't quit the cars. So, uh, we move on to the application committee's end. We know moving on to first and seventh Brian Avenue. Allow Steve to take this through the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I have an application here at number thirty seven Brian Avenue, which is for extensions to an existing dwelling. The site is located to the east side of Brian Avenue. Um, I'll just point out that the site is located on a slight bend in the road, which is relevant to assessing some of the impacts of the proposed developments. You'll notice that neighbouring dwelling number thirty five located to the south of the site, uh, is orientated at a slightly different angle by virtue of the bend in the road. The existing dwelling is a single storey property with three bedrooms. It's bordered by number thirty nine to the north and number thirty five to the south, both two storey dwellings. The proposal is to extend, uh, or construct a first floor extension that would effectively raise the height of the dwelling, um, to a maximum height of eight point four five metres. The design also includes the addition of a dormer to the rear roof slope to facilitate the creation of living space in the, uh, roof space. And the proposal also includes a single story wraparound side and rear extension. Uh, I should point out that the application or proposals has been revised during the determination of the application. The original plans included a larger development that would have included a two storey projecting side at rear extension as well. Following discussions with the applicants and having received objections from neighbours, uh, negotiations took place that ended up in that element of the proposal being removed. Negotiations have also resulted in the single story section being reduced slightly in overall height. Uh, the single story section is now no taller than three point two metres. In terms of the site, there is some variation in the ground level resulting in, uh, number thirty nine being on slightly higher ground than number thirty five being on slightly lower ground. In terms of our assessment of the proposals, we've primarily considered the impacts in design terms and amenity terms. In terms of design, we have reached the conclusion that the principle of extending the property upwards to create a two storey dwelling in this part of the city is acceptable. We note that there are predominantly two storey residential properties located on either side of the street. Uh, and as such, extending a bungalow, a single storey dwelling to create a two storey dwelling is not out of keeping with the prevailing character of the area. The design, excuse me, the design also follows the form and appearance of the existing dwelling. You'll note that the, uh, projecting gable to the front, the bay window, uh, are all built over the existing footprint. It's only the single story se- section that enlarges the existing footprint. In terms of the overall height of the extended dwelling, we, we've got contextual street scene elevation here that illustrates, uh, that the extended dwelling would not be significantly taller than either of the neighbouring properties. So it would appear slightly taller than number thirty nine and a little bit taller than the number thirty five. That's partly to account for the change in the ground level. Um, but the, the broadly speaking, it's of a comparable height to the immediate neighbouring properties and other neighbouring properties within, uh, the sheet. Um, we have received several objections over the course of two consultation periods that considered the original plans and then the revised set of plans. Concerns regarding the design, um, were primarily focused on the issues I've just mentioned to do with the character and the scale of the development. Amenity issues were primarily focused on the immediate neighbouring dwellings. Uh, I will use the photographs just to explain those. Uh, this view is from the front of the street looking at the existing dwelling with the neighbouring properties on either side, number thirty, uh, number thirty nine to north, number thirty five to the south. Uh, this is a view again slightly, uh, looking further down the road at number thirty five this time. And looking the other way again. These views are useful because they illustrate that there is no precise uniform character to the street. So broadly speaking, the properties are all of a similar age and a similar scale. However, there's no one, um, clear defining design or, or form that is present on the streets. There is a good amount of variation in the, in the streets here in the character. This is the view of the rear of the existing property, which shows where a single story flat roof extension has been added some time ago. Uh, can point out here clearly that the single story extension would not extend any further than the rear of the current extension. Uh, this, another view looking towards number thirty five this time. And looking towards number thirty nine this time. In terms of the concerns raised by neighbours, number, concerns from this side of the boundary, number thirty five, um, were including issues relating to overlooking and overshadowing primarily. Um, you'll see the proximity of the boundary, um, but also note the orientation of the building at a different angle to that of the subject property. In terms of overlooking, there would be some overlooking possible from the existing dormer. However, we've concluded that such views are all already possible from other neighbouring dwellings and are such a typical of the area. The views primarily, however, would be of the rear garden of number thirty five rather than of any primary living spaces. The windows on the side elevation of number thirty five primarily relate to secondary living spaces or spaces that, uh, or, or served by windows that are obscured glazed, so they're not significantly affected by the development. It's also noted that the orientation of the site means that no direct overshadowing of number thirty five would take place by virtue of the extended dwelling. This view shows the proximity of the boundary. Um, the first floor extension would extend close to the boundary here, um, but it's an area of the, uh, of number thirty five where it's primarily a, um, side access rather than in the main living spaces. So there will be a change to the current situation whereby the single story extension, excuse me, single story extension will be visible along the boundary, but it won't cause significant harm in terms of overshadowing or, or nor will it be significantly overbearing. Just a view here that indicates that there are dormer windows within the area, um, to, to illustrate that they are not out of character with the prevailing character of the area. Moving on now to the impacts on number thirty nine. Uh, this is the view from the rear garden of number thirty nine looking towards the application site. Concerns here, or raised here rather, um, relate to overshadowing, to a loss of outlook, to the view that the extension would be overbearing and in particular cause harm to the amenity spaces to the rear of the dwelling. You'll note here that there is already some mature planting that marks this section of the boundary. This is particularly relevant in considering the proximity of the single story section, which would be taller than the existing single story extension. However, this screening would continue to, um, obscure the view of the extension and as such would not change the current situation in terms of the amount of overshadowing caused by the single story section. The, the, um, the rear building line of number thirty seven is steps slightly back from that of number thirty nine. As such, there will be an impact caused by the first floor extension whereby, uh, it will, um, take up slightly more of this view possible now. So there will be a slight increase in the amount of overshadowing of the rear space. However, it's relatively marginal in relation to the current situation, with the majority of the impact, um, being noticed on the single story sections to the side of number thirty nine, which is primarily, um, secondary or is, is wholly a secondary living space rather than, um, any of the main living spaces which are further along. This view has been included because concerns were raised relating to access and construction issues um, that have been covered in the report. We have concluded that they are non-material planning considerations and are typically civil matters or matters that relate to building regulations, applications. So this picture has been included for illustrative purposes in relation to some of those concerns raised that have been covered in the report. On my, uh, on my site visit to number thirty nine, I visited all of the rooms inside the building to consider all of the concerns raised fully. This view is the view from the main hallway of number thirty nine that looks towards Cecil Road in the distance. Uh, the view shows the existing projecting gable section on the front of number thirty seven that would be extended upwards. So we've knowledge from this view that we have changed the current situation and there would be a degree of overshadowing of this space. However, the hallway is a secondary living space and the amount of overshadowing would not cause significant harm to the overall residential amenity enjoyed by the occupant of the, um, dwelling where the picture was taken at number thirty nine. There still would be a good amount of outlook and you would see that the view down Cecil Road would largely remain intact. This view is from the first floor landing window that looks across the subject property. So you will see that the first floor extension will be visible from this window. Um, similar situation to the ground floor window whereby the overshadowing caused is of a secondary living space rather than a primary living space and as such that impact can be considered acceptable and reasonable within the situation. That's the view in, uh, as you were to look out of the window directly from the same window to show the proximity of the dwelling. The proximity of the dwelling we've noted is, is relatively typical of the area. We don't consider it particularly close or overly close to the dwelling. There still would be some gap maintained between the two. As such, we don't consider the first floor extension to be overbearing in that respect. This is another window on the same side elevation, this time serving the main bathroom of number thirty nine. We note that it's an obscure glazed. You note that it's an obscure glazed window and its primary function therefore is to provide light to the space. You'll note, well, you just about noticed that the window is in line with the first-floor gable section to the front, so there will be a degree of impact. However, we are confident that it would continue to benefit from a good amount of light and that space would remain in good functional use. This is one of the bedrooms located in number thirty-nine that looks towards the rear this time. From this view, you can make out the screening that exists along the boundary currently. And this is the view looking directly out from that window, which gives you a good overview of the screening. So from this view of the screening where it remained, which is located on the side of number thirty-nine's boundary, you wouldn't be able to see the proposed single-story extension at all. It does give you a good overview also of the gardens that serve number thirty-nine and also the subject property. And that's the end of all the pictures, so just to take you back to the overview. So we have, in assessing all of the impacts on the neighbouring dwellings, we have concluded that there will be some change to the current situation, and indeed, we acknowledge that the overall change is significant in terms of the appearance of the dwelling turning from a bungalow to a two-story dwelling. In terms of character and appearance, we don't consider that it is disproportionately out of character or out of scale with the prevailing scale and character of the area. In terms of the impact on amenity, we acknowledge that there will be some impacts on both numbers thirty-five and thirty-nine. However, we don't consider any of the impacts individually or collectively to be significantly harmful to the residential amenity or the building standards of the occupants by the number thirty-five or thirty-nine. Just one other thing to note in terms of what we would be considering. The proposal does include a window at the first-floor level that would serve a landing. We, in the event that this is approved, we would condition that that be obscured glazed and not opening above, or not opening 1.7 metres above ground-floor level. With that condition in mind, we recommend that this application is therefore approved.
Thank you, Steve, for that. Thank you. We have got a couple of speakers on air, and the first one is Pauline Parker. Did you want to come down and speak, or to speak, you are a new and old pre-mens?
Good morning. I object to this application on the grounds of the significant loss of light, sun, outlook and privacy, and the extremely close proximity to my property and potential damage to its stability. I have lived here for almost forty years, nearly half my life. Councillors, before you approve this on the basis of one person's lizard, please come to thirty-nine Bryan Avenue and see the situation that photographs and plans do not adequately reflect. My house will be dwarfed and overshadowed, light and sun blocked out, complete loss of privacy in the garden. You will have seen the specifics in my objections. The small hall window referred to is the same size as my kitchen and bathroom windows. It's not small. As an order person, I rely on the light from my landing and hall windows when I'm using the stairs, and this is going to become more important as I get older. Any restriction to this light would be dangerous. What's the alternative? Keeping the hall and landing lights on at this time of energy crises and increased costs? The loss of light to my recently updated bathroom has not been addressed. The vengrue shapes, outlines of houses and sky that I can see through the bathroom window would be replaced by an oppressively close wall. The proximity of my house to the new build is not mentioned, apart from the proposed extensions are to be constructed sufficient distance from other neighbouring dwellings. That sufficient distance is thirty-two inches between the bungalow wall and my boundary and eleven feet between the wall of the bungalow and the wall of my house. There are no properties in Bryan Avenue where a first-floor wall is as close as this. Extensions closer than the width of two drives are ground floor, not first floor, and not overshadowing windows. Councillors, please come and see for yourselves. Only the planning officer has seen my house here, and I believe his report to be quite subjective. Phrases like 'little impact', 'limited amount of overshadowing', 'not considered to result in significant harm' acknowledges the problems but minimizes them. To us, there will be major impact, a considerable amount of overshadowing, and yes, significant harm. This construction would have a devastating and profound effect on my life and my long-standing living environment, as well as those of my fellow objectors. Please reject this application and enable the developer to return with a more considered proposal at a scale that will have the support of the Bryan Avenue community, my local councillor and members of this committee, who I am sure seek the highest standards of design and residential amenity. Thank you for allowing me to explain how this will affect me.
We have another speaker, this must be Ian Gregory, Senator Oliver's speaker, of course. Councilor Oliver, you have three minutes as well.
Thank you. So this is on behalf of Ian Gregory and Rebecca Wright, who are the other side neighbours at number thirty-five Bryan Avenue. In principle, we support a two-story dwelling on the existing footprint of thirty-seven Bryan Avenue. However, if you look at the side and rear profiles, existing versus proposed, you will see that this is not just a three-to-five bedroom extension as quoted in the report. This is a development on an enormous scale, not in keeping with the surrounding area and maximising the floor space in all directions, side extension, rear extension, two additional floors, as stated in the applicant's plan. We still do not have confirmation of the existing versus proposed fourth-floor space, but estimate this to be three times the existing space, exploiting all boundaries beyond reasonable parameters. The height, scale, massing and form of the proposed development is too large for sight, resulting in a cramped form of development and overdevelopment for the plot size, for instance. With regard to the street scene, the eaves and ridge height of the extended property are higher than our property and the roof is not hit, so it increases the bulk and scale and will not reflect the character or appearance of adjacent properties. On our side at Bryan Avenue from our property, just one small, single window dormer can be seen, so this is not the same as allowing gable ends on the proposed development that enable an enormous 7.2 metre wide dormer with three sets of windows occupying much of the roof space, as quoted in the report. The proposed side and rear extension extends 10.4 metres to the rear and then across the entirety of the rear of the property, 11.4 metres. The case officer advised the applicant in an email, there should be no more than three metres high, but now we want to approve at 3.2 metres, and judged by the street view scene and profile, this is actually higher, making it more overbearing. This development obviously sunlight in our living and kitchen area where, like many families, we spend most of our time. The proposal will cause overlooking and loss of privacy to the majority of our back garden by the addition of windows in both the proposed second level and third level enormous dormer. The applicant's failure to consult neighbours has caused prolonged and ongoing anguish and distress to us and others. It's to the detriment of the planning process. The applicant has shown no interest in the cohesion, wellbeing or amenity of the local community or the environment. This is reflected in the application before you today. On a personal note, this is from Rebecca and Ian Gregory, this ordeal has been happening while our youngest son, aged six, has been going through nine months of extensive treatment for cancer. He now needs a safe and secure and peaceful environment to recover, and this build will create intolerable noise activity and airborne particles for our son and indeed the rest of our family, both in our house and our outside spaces.
Very much for that. We hope the applicant has, thank you. Did she? Was it? I know she is, yeah. I didn't realise that. Councilor Oliver, you have another three minutes if you want to go again.
Thank you. So yes, that was Mrs. and Mrs. Gregory's words as well, not mine, but there will be a little overlap. So this is the board councillor, expressing my concerns about the impact of the development, both during the building process and the end results. And so you're aware that there were more objections to the revised application than the initial one. It's not something I've come across myself before, and it shows this development would affect the whole road, it's not only the immediate neighbours, sorry, immediate neighbours, so our home members have had a chance to read then. The bungalow already does look different to the surrounding houses. It's not on the right hand side itself, but the configuration of the road means that it is, it looks like it's kind of wedged in a kind of higher shape. There's already, this space has been maximised, and you can see from the slides earlier where you saw out of the window how the views were already very visible. So the proposal's made it look like a whole new build with a significantly larger size and it would impose on the space. It's true to say Bryan Avenue is a city centre road, but it's one of those roads that makes it not only what it is, and the houses aren't set widely apart, doesn't have yet the feeling of being cramped and overdeveloped though. So all three of the houses that we're talking about, we're giving particular attention today, numbers thirty-five, thirty-seven and thirty-nine have actually been extended over the years, and that's alluded to. So, you know, there's already been some changes there. And Mrs. Parker has offered a site visit, and I don't really think that you can get a full understanding of the impact without seeing. I mean, I know from the photos, they're great photos, but they give more of a sense of space than you actually see when there is a significant difference. The report concludes the proposed development had a limited impact on the residential amenities, but that's obviously based on planning officer assessment, not through living in the homes that would be impacted and living on the street. And I do believe that, for the reasons given, the proposed development would result in significant harm to the neighbouring residents and the wider neighbourhood. It's not quite an extension in the way most people would describe an extension, it's a reconfiguration of the entire property. I do understand how owners need to maximise their space, totally get that, but there's quite a difference between making a room and a roof or a dormer that's mentioned. And there are dormers nearby, but they're far, far smaller and they're scattered throughout the estate. And I also, so just right at the beginning, under the joint core strategy, we need to address climate change and protect environmental assets. The proposal does follow the existing footprint at the front, but then continues into the garden by some metres. Garden space is going to be lost at exactly the time we're launching our biodiversity strategy with emphasis on the use of residential gardens as part of the major recovery networks. There's no mention of extra planting and development, no green roof, no wall, for example, has been considered, it seems. To some, I believe that it's not an appropriate development. I believe a cumulative effect, every point has been addressed and I understand that every point has been satisfied to a certain extent, but when you look at it in its entirety, when you look at the cumulative effects, I believe that paints quite another picture, and I think we need to have something that's, if I come back with another plan, I think that would be last one, but I think that's all the reasons that I've mentioned.
Thank you, Councilor Oliver. We have got the applicant ahead, session, comments. You have six minutes.
Three minutes, thank you. Okay, thank you very much for allowing us to have this time. I'll try not to go over too much ground already covered by our case officer, hopefully give our points with you. I'd like to thank our neighbours for their comments and the councillor for the comments. We never intended to upset anyone with this. In fact, since it's in first incarnation, rather than, as has been suggested, we haven't consulted with neighbours, we've made changes three times to make sure that it is as meanable as possible for everyone. We like to think we're generally good, quiet neighbours, have a decent relationship on the street, I want to continue that. So if I could start with the two main concerns that seem to be raised, one the character and then the size. First, the character, you know, we're not demolishing this 1930s bungalow and then building one in the 1930s style. We're keeping to the footprint that is there and just adding up. We're using the clay roof tiles, keeping the bay windows, keeping the current roof design, matching the white colour render. In many ways, it sort of improves the character because when we bought it, it had been unloved for a while, and perhaps is a correlation on the street. As has been highlighted, Bryan Avenue is a real mixture of properties, single and two-story, it's tax-ented, detached, hipped and gabled roofs. There are some with loft roofs, eleven that we counted, and at least five with dormers, some that are very, very large, so I don't feel this would be out of place. And actually, we feel that the house would add to the sense of place that is Bryan Avenue. It's not a typical family home at the moment, yet there are thirteen schools within a mile of the property, eight of which in half a mile of the property, and you can pretty much see the Hewitt from the bottom of our drive. There are children walking to and from school every day. I don't think it's unfair to say the area has a real sense of being a family area and a family home, we're in keeping with that. For background, after having another baby, we're now a family of four. The plans allow for a bedroom each for our children and ourselves, a room downstairs for elderly parents who sometimes need a little help and can't manage theirs, plus the fifth room for an office since I, like many of us nowadays, are still working from home, so we feel that's like future-proofing this property for future generations. Next to the concerns, some have raised the height of the proposed dwelling. It has again been said that the street view shows that it's taller than the other properties. I think possibly on first glance, that might be a misunderstanding by some of our neighbours who have outlined it's broadly the same height. And again, I want a few objections there from Mr. Gregory, going to talk about extra two floors, and they've been talking, I've read all of the objections in detail, and they're talking about a three-story house. I want to really reassure people, this is a, what you see from the street is a two-story home, the footprint that is pretty much already there with a loft conversion akin to many other homes in the street. When it comes to comments about the mass of the proposed dwelling, as I said, we'd be keen to make changes with the original footprint, the two-story section is on the original footprint of what is there. The rear single story is not, as I suggested, a loss of garden space, it's currently a concrete patio, so we wouldn't be losing any garden space to do that rear section. And as you can see by any of the, any aerial view of the area along the plot, we wouldn't be going any closer to the boundary than any of our neighbours have on their plots, and as has been raised, number thirty-five is actually at an angle, so our houses aren't side by side, and the impact we feel would be lessened. In terms of dormers, those came about after initial objections to a two-story extension to the rear, which I'm being honest, I agree with now. You know, we were happy to change those in consultation with neighbours, in consultation with the planning officer. There was a second consultation, there'll be three changes, we brought the height of the single story down as well. And as we saw by one of the slides, if you stand in my own back garden and look up, you can see these dormers along the street, which I'm guessing my neighbours can also see from their gardens, so it wouldn't be setting any precedent. With regards to privacy and overshadowing and light, I think we've already ascertained that we have, we feel like we've really tried to minimise this impact. We are directly to the north of number thirty-five and an east-facing garden, so as the sun rises and falls, that really, there's not going to be a massive overshadowing there. And although yes, we are next to number thirty-five, what perhaps wasn't making clear is that wall there is a garbage wall. It's not a living space that we're right next to. And we, of course, would absolutely be happy to make that first-floor window that the planning officer was talking about to be obscured, glazed and not opening, that would be absolutely fine. Quick note, not strictly planning, but I want to assure everyone, we're currently living in a pretty energy inefficient house, it's been unloved for a long time. We want to turn it into one running predominantly on your walls. We have some small solar panels at the back, but it's important to us when we get the rest of this work done that we get all the rest, air source pumps, the insulation, battery storage of solar, believing that we're making it future-proofing, again, we're not losing any grid space. So to conclude, we feel that by keeping the 1930s feel of this property and creating a family home in what's a multi-generational street with children of all ages, the build will absolutely be in keeping with the overall character in terms of the place of Bryan Avenue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Steve, did you want to come back and run any big or not?
No, just to note, I can just illustrate one of the points mentioned there. There's one of the photos to show the area of hard standing, so the patio area to the rear that would be built on and gravel area to the side, so in terms of the more proper garden space, the green spaces, they wouldn't be lost in any significant way.
Thank you. Questions to the opposite, can anyone answer to?
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the report and to the speakers. We heard from one of the objectors, Mrs. Park, I believe, about her own loss of sight, I believe, and issues there. So on occasions, we consider applications with people with... So on occasions, we consider applications with people with special needs and disabilities in the subject properties and weigh that accordingly. Is there any, is there any similar considerations for immunity of people with disabilities such as foresight?
Not generally speaking, no. In the same way that personal circumstances wouldn't justify, normally justify an approval of something that's otherwise inappropriate, similarly, personal circumstances of an object wouldn't normally justify refusal of something that in all other respects is acceptable. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, there is some acknowledgement that there'll be a loss of light to that property next door, although you've said that it's less than substantial, and because it's, I believe it's a landing in a hallway, and I think Mrs Parker highlighted that that's, there's an important safety concern there. And so just to confirm, that's not of any consequence to the planning committee?
You have to take into consideration the impacts of any loss of lights upon the usability of the spaces, but when you're considering that, it's the impact upon the general usability, not the usability by a specific individual.
Any more questions? Anyone? Chair, Stuart?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if any can, if there's, if it's technically possible and a consideration might be given to mitigate that loss of light, for example, by reflective glass that would unwhite walls, which I think is going to happen anyway, but to make the most of what light there is. You know, it is a really big deal being able to see your site is impaired in any way. And I'm sure that as neighbours, they would want to help each other out where they could. This has been discussed, and are there other things we could do to compensate for that lack of light, because to make it less significant for the person impacted by it?
It's not specifically been referred to in the report, but the plans that we're considering are inclusive of a white coloured rendered finish to the walls. If, for example, an application come in where it was to change it to red bricks, then I'm sure that we would have been suggesting a change in the material to, in effect, aid the situation in a way you've described. So the plans that we would be approving for approving this are already doing a good job, I think, in terms of assisting in reflection of light. And in terms of the impacts, what we're referring to in overshadowing is direct overshadowing of sunlight. That's not to say that light doesn't reach these spaces. We are of the opinion that the windows referred to and illustrated in the photographs would still continue to reach and receive and accept an amount of light. It's more so that there would be a change in the amount of direct sunlight during certain hours of the day by virtue of the orientation of the site.
Thank you. Any more questions, Chair?
Yes, thank you, I'll just have a couple. Could you take us to one of the front view photographs, please? That one and the other one? When we're considering a two storey extension here, there is, I think the other one's probably a better, better view. Yes, that one. I think when we're considering a two storey extension and the street scene, the question I have is, particularly from that view and others, it's going to be, it's going to look awkward, or it could look awkward. Do you feel that there's a, there's a sense that the height at the front there will make it not fit quite properly with that, with that view? Because it's going to obscure the house to the right, number thirty five, from various views. On a, on a straight, on a straight line, it actually would have less impact because it would, because everyone's lined up. But on the street scene there, how do you feel about the view?
So there is a varied character among the street scene. So broadly speaking, they are properties of a similar scale, on similar plots, and as you've mentioned, there is a slight bend in the road here, which skews the view somewhat. But I think, as has been mentioned before, currently, the plot at the moment is the outlier in the street scene. So in terms, in terms of the change, you're ending up with something that is of the same character and the same form, it's obviously of a, of a taller height. I don't think that you would significantly lose any views of the street scene by virtue of the, in terms of the change of the height. Number thirty five in particular probably is one of the more unique buildings on the street, and as such, this kind of juncture in the road is a little bit different to other stretches of Bryan Avenue, where it's a little bit more uniform. So I don't think the changes that we would be considering are significantly harmful to the overall character, nor would they significantly impact on the setting or the appearance of number thirty five.
A question, do you mean?
Yeah, just a question about the dormer, please. Councillor Oliver mentioned that there are not that many dormers in the area, and actually, I don't think any of them, any of them are anywhere near as large as this proposed one. So my question would be, if there was, if there was a house of two storey like this without a dormer in it, would that dormer require subsequent planning permission?
No, very often it's the case that dormers to existing roof slopes don't require planning permission. There are a couple of basic parameters to which development has to stick to. Couple of them are kind of relevant here, I suppose, which is to say that the dormer shouldn't be overly dominant within the roof slope. So that includes keeping a gap to the eaves of which there is a significant visible gap here, and it shouldn't project beyond the ridge line, which this one doesn't do either. The other consideration relates to the volume created, which is the internal space, so that one's a little bit different. But broadly speaking, it would be very possible for numerous dwellings across the city to add dormers in a similar style to this without the need for planning permission.
Chair, Stuart?
Thank you. We've talked about loss of gardens and biodiversity. This family want to build on their patio, which I don't have an issue with. I wonder if we might ask or require them to not then extend hard standing with further patio, but to keep the garden that they've got as soft landscaping?
That's not something that we're considering as part of this application, so again, work such as laying of patios doesn't require planning permission in many cases, so it's not something that we're requiring of the applicants in this case. We haven't considered any landscaping details within the application, so it's not something that we would be requiring them to do as part of this proposal.
Okay, she, Chair, she does.
Thanks, Chair. Could I ask about the thirty two inches between the properties and what impact that's going to have, please?
So the contextual street scene gives you an idea of what that relates to in terms of real terms, I suppose. So this is number thirty nine, this is the single story garage, part of the extension. And then there's also a gap of a similar size to number thirty five. The gap perhaps is a little bit smaller than some of the existing dwellings along Bryan Avenue, where you've got driveways that are in place on, on either sides of the dwellings. So we don't consider this distance to be hugely out of character with the prevailing character, and it's also in terms of the amenity, it's not particularly, it's not overly overbearing in terms of its proximity. So the, the gap effectively provided by position of the garage, we think still is able to ensure that there is a good amount of space between the two dwellings. If we were, and also if we, if we were looking, if this, for example, the windows on the side elevation were serving primary living spaces, so for example, if there was a bedroom and that was its only view out, then we may take a different view, because there would be a loss of outlook. But the windows on the side of number thirty nine are primarily there to provide a source of light rather than any particular outlook. The views at the moment, I use a photo to illustrate, are of rooftop, of the neighbouring rooftop. Let's try and show you. Such as this. So this outlook is not particularly valuable in terms of the overall standard of amenity within, within the house. The main views from number thirty nine are to the front and to the rear. So those views are not going to be affected by the development in any significant way. So we don't consider that the impacts on the site of number thirty nine are going to result in a level of harm that significantly reduces the standard of residential amenity of the opponent to number thirty nine.
Thank you. Chair, Stuart?
Yes, thank you. Just for accuracy, I think actually the, it's probably not right to say that it's typical, that the boundary is close in other properties. I think the point was made by the speaker, that when there's a first story extension, or I'm sorry, where properties have a first story, they are set back further to the side, so the, the distance, the boundary is less, and we can see in those photos that it will be very close. And also, I confirm that the photos don't really show how tight the space is there, so I just wanted to point that out for accuracy. I think it's sort of, it's probably unusual.
Thank you. The recommendation is to approve in our move, that's our second, thank you, Councillor Sands, discuss, anyone? Councillor Sands?
I think great pains have been taken to ensure that the upward extension is in keeping with both the character of the existing bungalow and the house next door. I think overall, they've managed a very sympathetic sort of addition to the street scape. So, yep, I find it a nice addition, and I shall be approving.
Chair, Stuart?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm going to take a different view, actually. I think that probably the collective and cumulative impacts of this probably aren't suitable. And it reminds me of another one we had in Irving Road a couple of years ago, where it was, where the borders were really tight, and I did actually vote for it, because I was sold on the, the green roof that came with it, but subsequently seeing the property now as a property that I had a previous interest in, I believe that it was, it was a mistake to vote for it, so on that basis. And the fact that I think that the, the street scene, which actually wasn't covered by other members or other objectors, I think the street scene is going to be significantly altered by this, and I think it similarly may stand out in a bad way, but of course, I have sympathy with the applicants who wrote, clearly need some extra space.
Chair, Stuart, Sue?
I've been following this on Google Maps on my phone, no, I'm not on social media, interesting, I was wondering. And I've had a little look, and with number thirty seven is next to number thirty five, there appears to be a path that already goes down the side of the house on number thirty seven between the two houses. Now, because there's a garage next door, that means that the space for the main building, like the two storey building, which is a lovely, lovely house, that means the garage means that there's a bigger space than the space we're kind of talking about. I mean, when you're saying thirty five inches or wherever it was, I was imagining that the two walls were going to be that close together, but the garage, as you pointed out in your report, actually gives a bigger space than that, and I'm assuming that the path between the houses will be retained. And when I look along, once again, Google Maps, and look at the next house up, which is at a different angle, it, it seems to me that that must at some stage, and some of those windows overlook the garden of number thirty seven already. So, you know, the issue of overlooking seems to go both ways in my books. I'm minded to approve.
Thank you. No one else wish to speak? Shall we? You should go, I think, I mean, the two of my house, I have a good time with it. No, we haven't all got good feedbacks.
Don't you say that all you mentioned, everything's hard to say all attention.
Well, I know the area, so I don't want to look on. Here we go, yeah. Chair, Stuart?
Yes, I think the objection to this on the, on the boundary is the space between the, the existing house and therefore the first floor extension and the boundary, rather than the directly property next door. We've already heard that it's going to be quite close and with obscure to some extent. And this one's finely balanced for me. I think it would, it would have been improved with a hipped, a hipped roof and a smaller, a smaller dormer. That might have been, that might have been an improvement. I just think, I do believe it's not going to sit right in the, in the street. And I certainly have sympathy with the, with the, those that have objected, because I think it is going to have an impact. So cumulatively, that is the reason why I'm going to vote against this one, but it is finely balanced.
Chair, Chair?
It is finely balanced. I would just like to commend the applicants on their addition of environmental features which their planning has contributed in their property, which goes above and beyond what we would be expecting as a planning committee. And I feel if we could maybe take a leap from their book and ask for more properties to follow suit, we might go a long way. So I wouldn't be minded to approve this, although it is finely balanced.
Okay, if no one else wish to speak, we will straight to the bill. All those in favour of the report, please show.
It is a recorded vote, and I'll call out next. Councillor Jardine in favour, Councillor Susans, Councillor Mike Sands, Councillor Graham, Champion, Young, Thomas, Major Thomas, Councillor Peak, Councillor Lubbech.
All those against?
Councillor Stuart voting against.
Councillor Davis, Stephen. Thank you.
Is that by virtue of your ward council?
Okay, thank you very much, so that's been approved. Thank you. And that's the end of the...